Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to emphasize a couple of things first. Please silence all cell phones. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please identify yourself and state your address. Limit your comments to five minutes and please ensure you are delivering new testimony to the commissioners. At this time, we will approve the consent agenda. Tamara, could you read items one through four, please?
Yes, sir. Item one is approval of September 7th, 2016, minutes of the regular meeting. Number two is September Platts. Number three is 5329, 2016, rezone from the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban CN Conservation and LW Live Work Districts to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban CN Conservation and LW Live Work Districts for allowed forms located south of East 57th Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue. Item four is 5555, 2016, rezone from AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located at 7820 South Brandy Avenue.
Thank you. At this time, are there, excuse me, are there any objections from the audience from items one through four? Commissioners, any objections through items one through four?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. Items on the consent agenda, numbers one through four, have been approved. If you were here for any of those items, you are free to leave. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, same sign. Regular agenda is approved. Planning staff, item number five. Oh, excuse me.
Item number five is 5397, 2016, rezone from S1 General Institutional District to the C3 Commercial Community District for allowed forms located at 1200 East 3rd Street.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Building Services. The applicant is proposing to rezone this 1.3 acre site, which was the old Joe Foss School. He's looking at rezoning it to the C3 Commercial District and then have some first floor retail uses and then the second floor would be converted to office uses. As you can see by the site plan here, there's currently a building and parking lot. Those do meet the setbacks. However, any additional parking or building additions would have to meet the current shaped places zoning ordinance for setbacks and buffer yards. The proposed retail office use requires roughly one parking space for every 200 square feet. That would be a total of 208 parking spaces for the two floors and roughly 41,500 square feet. It appears that the existing site has roughly 45 parking spaces, which is roughly 163 off-street parking spaces short of what's required by the ordinance. The applicant had submitted, excuse me, a parking study prepared by the Traffic Impact Group out of Bloomington, Minnesota, that you received a copy of. Staff feels that this specific redevelopment is located in an area that should utilize roughly that average percentile that was suggested in the parking study, since we do feel that there will be some walking traffic and some people driving to the site. Utilizing that calculation as presented in that impact study, they are indicating that this site needs 115 parking spaces. And it appears with their site plan with redrawing some parking spaces in the existing parking lot that they can come up with a maximum of 77 spaces. And that's still roughly 38 spaces short, or roughly 33 percent. They are also indicating a parking lot to the south of the existing building. However, that parking lot does appear that it will not meet the required setbacks and buffer yards of their proposed RE4 form. Staff feels that this proposed rezoning to the C3 Commercial District does not meet the shapes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan. This section of North Cliff Avenue does contain several commercial businesses adjacent to Cliff Avenue. However, they are smaller in size and scale, less than the 25,000 square feet. And they do provide more neighborhood services such as a small grocery store to the west of this lot. The proposed C3 zoning is usually reserved for properties located on two major arterial streets within a major community commercial areas. The applicant has submitted that parking study, which does indicate the 115 parking spaces. However, that is still 38 spaces short. And staff feels that customers and employees will have to park along adjacent local streets, which would cause neighborhood intrusion and commercial creep into the existing single-family residential neighborhood that's located to the east. If this rezoning request to C3 is approved, they can do the plan that they have presented as long as they either provide additional parking or they get an alternative parking plan approved. If this rezoning is denied, it will continue to be zoned S1 and they could do a combination of office on the first floor and some residential on the second floor. The proposed rezoning does not meet that 2035 shapes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan and the site will not be able to achieve the additional parking requirements for this commercial density. Therefore, staff does recommend denial of this rezoning request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions from the commissioners of staff?
Mr. Chair. I think there's community interest in seeing a building like the old Franklin School reused. You talked about some options to what has been proposed that could be pursued. Can you speak a little more about those?
Staff has met with the applicant quite a few times. They kind of gave them the option of doing more office on the first floor and then the second floor converting those to residential living units, which would significantly take down their parking requirements. We felt like that was a pretty good reuse of this building. And similar uses of these old schools have been those kind of conversions. We just feel a commercial on that first floor and office on the second will just cause a major traffic impact to this neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward and state your name.
Sam Assam, appearing on behalf of Mr. Kadar Sadat, who's the owner of the building. My address, 530 South Phillips Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We had a, we did have a neighborhood meeting on this. And what Mr. Sadat is proposing to do on the main floor with the commercial is, in essence, to, he's trying to create an old country market, if you will. When I say old country, I mean European style or Middle Eastern style over there. There's a large population, immigrant population over there. His thought process is that there's a need for this type and it would also be for startup businesses for the immigrant community. In talking with Traffic Impact Group, they came up with total needed spaces or what would be meant over there of 103 spaces. And I had a conversation with a gentleman and we did discuss, because of the setback, we talked about parking on the street. But during our neighborhood group meeting, I think they're, you know, they would prefer that we came in the front. So that's the, that's the approach that we came in here with. And Traffic Impact feels that the spaces that we're providing would be sufficient for the use intended. These buildings are, they're tough. I mean, the ones that have been converted to apartments were marginally successful or not successful economically. This one in particular, in this location, probably would fail as well, more likely than some of the others. I know Garfield was a tough one. I think it's on Southwestern Avenue. I can't remember, is that Garfield? And Mr. Dunham did that many years ago and that was, that was a tough one. So he's elected not to pursue that just because we don't think it would be a successful venture on that. He thinks this would. Our neighborhood meeting, we had a good turnout, good conversation. And they too understand the difficulty of trying to reutilize or, you know, reconvert these buildings and put them to a good use. And we didn't have anybody at the meeting that was objecting to what he was intending to use on this site for, so.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of commissioners, of Mr. Assam?
I had one question about the parking. Shows that I believe only two ADA spaces are provided and that higher number option of parking spaces available, but the requirement calls for six.
Yeah, and one of the things that we talked about, and the tough balance here, these, as designed, they're great for schools, but there's so much nonusable inefficient space in these types of buildings too. So if you're going down to the square footage, that's right. Yeah. I still think we can, we can still modify some of the parking spots and make this happen. We understand we've got to adhere to it and he so states in the, in the report, we have to. There's no if, ands, or buts about it, so.
Because your ADA sites are, parking are larger.
Right.
Plus you have to have aisles.
Right.
So that's taken away, is that taken away from your 103 or 118, whatever you said? Because you're only showing two on here now.
Right. It would take away from the 118, yeah.
Definitely.
Definitely. And that's why I think he's cut it down to 103. So it still fits within the guidelines, the prescribed guidelines that he had.
The other, I guess I got one other question and the other one is the buffer yard.
Right.
We have a...
We're going to have to seek a variance on that. If you, if, I'm sorry for interrupting. If you approve this tonight, we still have to go seek a variance on that. No question about it.
Any other questions, Mr. Assam? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address this?
John Bennett, 731 North Cliff Avenue. I attended the neighborhood meeting and Mr. Assam was correct. There was no dissent or no, you know, negatives given, but the information that we were given was very, very elementary and didn't even allow for questions to come up. The questions that came up, of course, one was the parking. Signage was another issue. Depending on how many small shops are involved, is going to be a function of the number of parking spaces necessary. Foot traffic as well as automobile traffic in and out of that. You know, I would suggest that perhaps you drive by and try to look at that and see how you're going to get 100 and even 103 parking spots. It's going to be a real bit of a trick. So I'm just saying that that's, that was the information that was given to us at the neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Bennett. Is there anyone from, anyone of the commissioners want to, got any questions of Mr. Bennett? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to address this issue?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of Jason? So I think we focused a little bit on parking. Help me with the, if this gets approved, what is his process going forward for, I mean, because he would have to adhere to the standards or what?
If you, this gets approved and gets rezoned, he has to provide the parking spaces as required by the ordinance, which was that 200 and some number. Otherwise, he would have to come back in front of you for an alternative parking plan by utilizing, I'm assuming, the existing parking study that he has. If he wants to include those, that parking lot, that new additional parking lot on the south side of the buildings, before he would come back, he would then have to go to the zoning board of adjustment to get a variance to construct that parking lot to be able to include that into his parking calculations.
Okay.
So he's got a couple more approvals yet.
And the question on signage, that would be addressed with the ordinance too. The size of the building dictates how many square feet of signage?
It's either the size of the building and the frontage, which this thing has four frontages, so he'd probably be allowed to sign actually on each street plus building signage by the frontage probably in this instant. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, with that, no one else from the audience, I'll look for action on item number five.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve number five, item number five, for discussion purposes.
I have a motion and a second for discussion.
This particular item, I mean, as I look at the staff analysis, as I look at the parking study, I can get on board with perhaps a potential variance that's less than the posted in the comprehensive plan, but even with that, using the averages, they're still coming up short on capacity. They're going to come up short on the forms necessary to surround this particular property. And the, the fact is, our comprehensive plan has been a very effective set of rules for us to use in what we do. And it was even validated by the city in a referred vote, you know, the voters of the city. So I'm really struggling to get behind this one.
Mr. Chair, I, I disagree. I think I am in support of this. These projects are so challenging. And, you know, it's, I give you credit for taking it on. A vacant building isn't a good building and, in my opinion, only gets worse with age. And so to have somebody step up and take on this project, in my opinion, is a good thing. He still has to adhere to standards for parking. He still has a few hoops to jump through before this is approved. So I'm in support of it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I look at a rezone maybe different than other people and I don't worry about the parking or the signage or anything like that because there's standards written into ordinance and that's what has to be adhered to. I would look at, does C3 make sense in this spot? You know, it's surrounded by C2 on one pretty major street, but only one. And I think typically the C3, if you're talking about 75,000 square feet or up to 75,000 square feet of a building goes on a location where you're going to have two pretty major intersections to get to it, some sort of a commercial area. So I guess I have a, this one's tough, but I don't think I can support it because it doesn't seem like it's in the right location for, to be C3.
Mr. Chair, it may not be necessarily in the right location, but I also think with the, the minimal amount of neighborhood opposition that showed up here tonight leads me to believe that maybe the neighbors are in support of it, knowing that there will be improvements done to this property in the future.
Anyone else want more discussion on this? Okay. Seeing there's no more discussion, all in favor of item number five, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Yes. Let's do a raise of hands. All in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed. Motion fails. Item number five fails. Tamara, item number six, please.
Number six, 5539, 2016, conditional use permit for the WM1 form to be located in an area where traffic will be from a local or residential street located at the northwest corner of West 2nd Street and North Harlem Avenue.
The applicant here is Lanny Orringer and he is proposing to construct roughly a 23,500 square foot warehouse building on this existing vacant site. The plan is to utilize roughly 40% of it. That's just under 10,000 square feet for an indoor recreation facility with the remaining 14,000 square feet for some small warehouse suites. This is site plan of the proposed building. A North Harlem Street and West 2nd Street are considered local streets. However, they do provide access to not only single-family residential properties east of North Harlem and north of West 2nd Street, but also in these industrial properties. The property was rezoned in early 2013 from residential to light industrial with significant discussion prohibiting semi-truck traffic down North Harlem Avenue. To alleviate some of these concerns, they, the street department did place traffic signs going down Harlem Avenue prohibiting truck traffic pass-throughs. The applicant is now simply coming back to construct the building that was approved in 2013 for that mostly indoor recreation facility plus some small warehouse suites. Further, the concept plan does indicate the main access for this is more adjacent to 2nd Street than from Harlem Avenue, which should push most of the traffic going to the site to 2nd Street. Because the, the site should not generate significant semi-truck traffic once this building is completed and measures are taken to prevent semi-trucks from traveling down North Harlem Avenue, those are the existing traffic signs that already line Harlem Avenue. Staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on item number six? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Lanny Orringer, 2300 West 3rd Street, Suite 3. I think Jason described it fairly well. We did have a neighborhood meeting on Monday. I'd invited all of the adjacent property owners along Harlem Avenue and 2nd Street to the meeting and we had five attendees. And all of them came from the Harlem Avenue street, the 2nd Street. People didn't, either weren't concerned about it or weren't able to attend. The meeting went very well. Really, the only feedback that we received was a concern about construction traffic, not necessarily traffic after the building is constructed and occupied. We, we heard loud and clear back in 2013 when we rezoned it that the neighbors didn't want semi-truck traffic. So we've intentionally, we're not looked for and have signed up a potential tenant for the indoor recreation facility, which there's no semis with a basketball practice facility. And then the other three suites would be smaller contractor shop type suites. There's no loading docks. There are overhead doors, but no loading docks, which essentially really minimizes and almost totally takes out the opportunity for a semi to even enter the site and use it in an effective manner anyway.
Okay. Any questions for commissioners, for Lanny? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I look for commission action on item number six.
Mr. Chair, move to approve item number six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Remember when we rezoned this and there was a lot of discussion about keeping the truck traffic away? And I would say the fact that Lanny had a neighborhood meeting and none of the neighbors came here today to talk about truck traffic, plus the fact that we have the signs on Harlem Avenue speaks to their comfort with it. And it's also, I think, a testament to Lanny that he is proposing something that would limit that for those neighbors as well. So I'm in support of this one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of item number six, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, the same sign. Item number six passes.
Item number seven is 5631, 2016, conditional use for an electronic message center sign in a residential zoning district located at 235 North Prairie Avenue.
Good evening, Diane Decoyer with Planning and Building Services. The applicant for this is Augustana Lutheran Church. They've requested a conditional use permit for an electronic message center. The church is located at the southwest corner of North Prairie Avenue and West 7th Street. There's an existing freestanding sign on the east side of the church property, which is approximately where they would like to locate the new sign, as you can see here in the image. There's numerous churches within Sioux Falls that have installed electronic message centers that are situated along arterial streets and oriented away from residential uses. This sign is located directly across the street from residential and we've heard from several residents in the area regarding concerns for safety in the neighborhood for vehicles that could be distracted with this kind of signage. I've passed out emails tonight for an update to all of you. You should have that at your desk. There was also other ones provided at the briefing yesterday. Staff recommends that the neighbors in the area that may be affected by the message board address these concerns to you to be able to determine the outcome of the decision to approve or not approve the conditional use permit. Background information, the church did hold a neighborhood meeting and I think they had fairly good attendance. And we do have the applicant here who can address and answer any questions regarding that. They also have a representative from Daktronics if you have any questions directed for them on that as well. I can answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions of Diane?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dan, is it a conditional use permit required because it's an electronic sign or because it's in a residential area?
Because it's an electronic sign in a residential area. It's adjacent, so just across the street here, across North Prairie, where it's located to the east and then also to the north. So it's within, I think it's about 65 feet to the, to the east there. So it's that close to residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. One of the letters indicates that there could be as many as 15 digital billboards, six associated with churches in a six-block area with all, those all be in the same circumstances with regards to if they proceed to request a sign, electronic?
Anytime there is a digital board adjacent to residential, they do have to go for a conditional use permit. And as you've seen in the past, quite often those are on arterial streets. This is not, it's right directly across from residential, so this has a little bit of a different impact.
Any other questions of Diane? Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Case. I am the president of the Church Council for Augustana Lutheran Church, 235 North Prairie Avenue. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the, or thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about our proposed digital message board. This undertaking started at the church over a year ago with our intention of having a better way to communicate with, to communicate and reach the neighborhood about the community events that we, that take place at the church. Specifically, we host several events where we work to provide fundamental benefits, usually food-related, to individuals and families in the neighborhood around the church. These events often include a free community meal and/or a week's worth of groceries for families. Over the past year, we have hosted over 15 such events where families come and receive a helping hand or a place to connect and grow in their faith. Not including, not including, that number does not include our normal church programs such as our Logos program or Vacation Bible Study for the youth in the community. We believe this proposed message board will better help us communicate with those in our neighborhood that may not have the means or ability to access other types of traditional media such as the newspaper, the internet, or social media. During the last year, we've worked with Pride Neon and several members of our congregation to design the sign. Several versions of the sign have been developed, both with or without the digital message board. The congregation had a chance during an open member meeting whereby everyone had a chance to voice their opinions about the sign options. In the end, the congregation voted 35 to 3 in favor of this proposed sign. As part of our desire to be a good neighbor, we hosted... As part of our desire to be a good neighbor, we hosted two neighborhood meetings, one in mid-July and one at the end of August, where we invited the neighborhood to learn about the proposed sign and offered to address any questions or concerns they had. At each meeting, only two neighbors, who were not otherwise church members, attended each meeting, so a total of four. The concerns raised by the, excuse me, the concerns raised by those neighbors were very similar to those concerns that were raised by our own church members. Most prominently, they were the size of the sign, the aesthetics of the sign, and the safety issues that Diane had referred to. With respect to each of those concerns, first, the size of the sign. The sign is only twenty-eight square feet, which is significantly smaller than the fifty square feet allowed by the ordinance and will be appropriately placed on the land, as you see in the picture. Second, with regard to the aesthetics of the sign, we worked very diligently on the design of the sign in order to maintain an appropriate look and feel for our 1924 building. The brickwork on the pedestal, the shape of the sign itself mirroring the shape of the main window that's on the south side of our building, and the color of the sign were all intentionally chosen to blend with the church. And the dark color of the sign was also specifically chosen to help reduce light pollution in the neighborhood. In fact, the designer of the sign does live less than a block away from the church, and so the design is very important to him and his family, as they're also immediate neighbors. I, like many of our other members of our congregation and the neighborhood, have a vested interest in maintaining a certain look in the neighborhood. My wife grew up in this neighborhood and bought her first home there. Her family still resides in the neighborhood, and I lived in the neighborhood for a number of years when I first moved to Sioux Falls. I am personally very sensitive to the historical relevance of our church building and how it ties to the neighborhood. And to help demonstrate that, the church is in the midst of a two-year battle with our insurance company over the appropriate shingles to replace the existing roof that was damaged in the hailstorm two years ago. Finally, we feel the safety concerns are effectively and appropriately handled by the ordinance. It is my understanding that we are required by ordinance to use a dimmer on the sign as the daylight changes. And in an effort to be a good steward and a good neighbor, we ask that the city put a condition on our permit that would require the sign be turned off by 10:00 PM and restrict the use of animation or any fast-changing messages. These restrictions would help ensure that even though the church leadership may change over the years, the message board cannot be used in ways that would create a nuisance for the neighborhood. With respect to other safety concerns, as Diane mentioned, we have a representative from the message boards manufacturer, Dectronics, who can more thoroughly address any safety concerns that electronic message boards like ours may create. We know the importance of reaching out to our diverse neighborhood of population in all ways. As we have done our best to address the concerns of the neighbors regarding the sign, we now want to make sure that we effectively address the needs of our neighborhood with respect to their fundamental needs. As I mentioned before, one of our most popular programs is the Food To You Mobile Food Pantry. We are aware of families who have learned about the mobile food pantry at other churches only because of the electronic message board that was at each of those churches, that without that mobile food pantry, that they would not have the food to feed their family. Additionally, just two weeks ago, I personally had to turn away a ninety-year-old woman who had come to our church for the community dinner and the food pantry on the wrong evening. Our goal is to simply reach out to as many people in the neighborhood as possible and provide them with a warm meal, a helping hand, and an opportunity to grow in their faith. We realize there are members of the neighborhood, as well as our own congregation, that who are not in favor of this sign for various reasons. But unfortunately, it's just not possible to please everyone in this situation. So we ask the commission's approval as we move forward with this sign to help us with our community efforts. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Case?
Mr. Chair, could you just clarify? You mentioned that the sign would be turned off by 10:00 PM and then no animation. Would the no animation be?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking in regards of like pictures, that would be moving objects on the sign. And so that digital message board would actually go black overnight from 10:00 PM until morning.
All right, thank you.
But would the message, would the message be changing? Just there's no animation, would like it say, "Sup and Pis supper tonight at six, backpack giveaway tomorrow at seven?"
Right, I think the message would have the ability to change from time to time, but we wanted to do it in a way that would not create an unnecessary distraction for drivers that may be passing by at the time. And we would try to restrict it so it was largely a static sign. You know, where the message would change, but it wouldn't be one like that's in constant motion, like you see in other commercial centers around the city.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Case?
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this item? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is John Martin. I live at 232 North Prairie Avenue. I'm sixty feet from what she referenced. And we've lived there for sixteen years, and we are associate members of the congregation, so this is kind of difficult for us, but we stand firmly opposed to this proposal. We know that the church has gone through a lot of steps to make the design as close as possible to try to fit in with the neighborhood, but we don't see where an electronic sign fits in a residential neighborhood and much less a nationally-recognized historical neighborhood. It just simply doesn't fit, is our feeling. We also have some concerns about some safety issues. The city's spending a lot of resources right now to talk about distracted driving, and I don't know why you would take a street that has a lot of foot traffic on it and that type of thing and give another opportunity for people to be distracted. You know, the size is a consideration. I think it's awfully big. I don't want to take long, but those are our main objections. I've not talked to anybody in the neighborhood that's really in favor of it. Some of them aren't opposed to it. Our church does a lot of good, but I think there's a lot of ways that we can get the word out other than saddling the people that live in the neighborhood with the sign all the time. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Merkin?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
I'm Greg Daniel, 303 North Summit. And I've lived in the neighborhood for thirty years. Augustana Lutheran has been across from us all those years, obviously. And I don't see a need for a fluorescent or a shining sign in our historic district neighborhood. If we get that there, does Cathedral want one? Are we going to get one at the Summit Events Center? You know, where does it go from here? I oppose the Summit Events Center becoming open to what they are now zero or oh or whatever zoned. It just worries me that we're starting on a slippery slope if we start allowing Dectronic signs in our neighborhood.
Any questions from commissioners of Mr. Daniels? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
I'll second. I've got a motion and a second discussion.
I guess I struggle with this one. I have great respect for what the church does within the community. I think you do a lot of great work and certainly do have a lot of respect for that. However, I'm just not sure that this is the location for this sign. And with the amount of neighborhood opposition that has come out tonight, I think I would struggle with supporting this.
Also, as I look at it, you know, we've seen a lot of these signs. They're typically on an arterial street that already has either other commercial or other advertising of a similar or maybe even a different nature. But this particular area is heavily, heavily residential. It's a fairly slow-moving street. It's, there's just a lot of benefits to that fairly cozy feel to things, and this really doesn't feel like it fits into that neighborhood very well, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Diane a question?
Yes.
The historic district was brought up. Is there any direction or information relative to the location in the historic district with regards to this type of signage?
The Board of Preservation was not required to review the signage for the church. Had it possibly been on the building, they might have reviewed it, but because it is separate from the building, they were not required.
About the electronic component?
The same.
All right.
I guess that's what I'm addressing, is the electronic portion of it.
Thank you, Diane. Any other questions? Any more discussion, excuse me? Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes. All opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion fails. Item number seven fails.
All right, item eight, 5633, 2016, conditional use for an on-sale alcohol within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 5100 East Garfield Street.
The applicant here plans to construct a roughly 8,000-square-foot building that will house a brewery and taproom. He is also looking, proposing to construct a patio on the front side of this building facing Arrowhead Parkway. This section of East Arrowhead Parkway contains various commercial businesses. The single-family home is to the southwest, adjacent to Arrowhead Parkway, Parkway, excuse me, and will most likely be redeveloped for office or commercial uses in the future. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the nature and location and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff on item number eight? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here? Would you please come forward, state your name and address, please?
Hi, Don Choat, 6813 East Limestone Circle, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Anything you want to add to this?
No, sir, that was pretty complete. I'm a man of few words. I was, I love Sioux Falls, and I selected this site just because I looked around town for a suitable location for my brewery, and I feel that constructing was my best option. I think it's a great opportunity to be on the east side of town, which is rapidly growing. There's a definite, I don't want to say need, but there isn't many options for to have a drink on that side of town, and I'm hoping to get approval for it. Do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions of, from the commissioners of, Don?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So brewery, you're brewing your own beer and selling, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it good?
Of course it is. I was, just to add, I was a brewer at Wooden Legs Brewing Company in Brookings, South Dakota, so I have experience doing this. This has been a lifetime dream of mine to do this, this project. I've worn many different hats in my life, and brewing is the only thing that kind of completes me. So I'm really excited to move on with this project.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item and number eight?
Sam, may I ask, I own the property to the west and to the north. Yeah, and my only concern is we've made a sizable investment on the corner of Foss and plan to do so as we move to the west. I have no objection to the use. I'm concerned about the materials to be utilized on the building. So that, having said that, as you move further west, you got the young storage. Eventually, that will get redeveloped into commercial, too. And my only concern is the components of the building. I'd rather not have a metal structure there, but rather a nice-looking building. So I'm a little confused, too, on these diagrams. Now, this one shows it right next to Foss Avenue. And on the other one, when you flip back, it looks like it's on the one to the west. Which one is it? This one right here? Okay, yeah, and there is some homes up there, too. So again, a metal, you know, if it's a metal building, I've got a problem with that. If it's got some design elements in it, and it's wood frame, stucco, whatever, no problem. Okay, thank you.
Don, you want to come up and speak on this, help him out a little bit, please?
Yes, I just would like to speak to the aesthetic of the building. I will, of course, it will be a steel frame warehouse, but I do want it to have some curb appeal. So I'm going to try to dress that up with wood trim and brick wherever I can. It's going to have a front entrance lobby that I hope to construct in some wood frame so that it's not just so boxy-looking. At its heart, it is a brewery where, you know, a production brewery where beer is made. But I believe that the aesthetic of a brewery is that it's still like a working man's warehouse where we make something to sell to the public.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for item number eight.
Mr. Chair, a motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, now all in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign? Item number eight passes.
Item nine, 5662, 2016, conditional use for an electronic message center sign in a residential zoning district located at 1800 South Valley View Road.
The applicant here is proposing to place back-to-back, about two and a half foot by eight-foot electronic message center sign to be incorporated into their proposed ground sign at the location of the existing Good News Church, which is located adjacent to West 26th Street and west of Marion Road. The overall sign where the message boards will be placed will be roughly eight feet high by six feet tall. Numerous churches within Sioux Falls have installed electronic message centers that are situated along arterial streets and oriented away from residential areas. The proposed freestanding sign will be located adjacent to 26th Street and roughly 150 feet from any residential house, and those are the ones that are on Tecumseh Court there, and they're actually the rear yards of those houses. The side will be, or the sign will be situated along this busy arterial street and should have little impact on the residential properties in this specific area. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Could you confirm, Jason, that this 26th Street at this section is an arterial, correct?
Correct, it is a four-lane arterial street.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Jason, can you just point out where the sign is going to be on the?
Yes, it is kind of in the northwest corner of the site. You can see it here, kind of on the sign where the little blue dot. So it's closest to another church to the west, and the nearest residential to the east is all the way across the lot there, so.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to defer item number 10 to our next meeting.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second.
10 or item nine? Yeah, item number nine.
Item nine, sorry.
You run nine.
Item number nine.
I have a motion and a second to defer item number nine until next month's meeting. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion number nine is deferred to the October, no, September, or November meeting.
Item 10, 5634, 2016, alternative site plan for a decrease in the landscape and buffer yard located at 901 North Main Avenue.
Diane with planning. The applicant for this is Allison DeBorak with Coke Hazard Architects, and the owner is Falls Overlook LLC. This is an alternative site plan to provide the required buffer yard for the development. The project is located at 901 North Main Avenue in the downtown planned unit development just west of the bakery. just west of the bakery. The existing property on the west side is approximately 50 feet higher than the east side adjacent to North Main Avenue. Residential homes to the north and south of this property are located in the C2 Neighborhood and Streetcar District and are currently non-conforming as DD3 forms. To the west of the property is an alley that separates the adjacent RT1 Single Family Residential, and also RT2 Townhome Residential. The applicant is working with existing grades to step the units and maximize views and access from North Main and the alley at West First Street. A level D buffer yard is required along the north, south, and west property edges where adjacent to the DD3 forms. The site plan indicates the buffer yard setback at the north and south edges of the property between 23 and 55 feet. Due to the severity of the slopes of the property, the applicant is proposing 97 landscape units in lieu of 75 with a continuous line of Fat Albert spruce trees that will provide year-round screening of the property in lieu of the required berms. The west side of the property identifies a 25-foot setback in lieu of 45, is also separated by a street and alley. The applicant is providing the required 112.5 landscape units of Fat Albert spruce trees to provide year-round screening on this side of the property. The applicant has increased the required landscape units in the buffer yard from 75 to 97 at the north and south, and the required 112.5. The function and appearance of the units will be residential, which should be compatible with the adjacent properties. It is because they are located in the downtown PUD that the buffer yard requirement is required. Further, due to the dwelling units located on both floors, the applicant will also have to submit for a conditional use permit through Planning Commission, and they'll come forward probably in November for that. Because the subject application meets the intent of the buffer yard and the landscaping requirement within the shapes of Falls zoning ordinance, staff does recommend approval for the application. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commissioners of Staff? Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here?
Allison DeVorak, Co-Cazard, 431 South Phillips. This project is developing an empty vacant lot that's been vacant for quite a while, and I think we're trying to bridge the downtown to the residential area that's right behind it, so doing that with these condos that could potentially have some sort of workshop on the first level would correspond well, especially with the bakery being right in that area.
Any questions from Commissioners? Allison? Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on item number 10? Seeing none, I need a motion in a second.
I live next door. My name is Jim Bennett, 829 North Main, and I have no objection to this. I've had that lot next to me for 50 years, and it needs something done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
First of all, thank you for coming out and supporting it. That's always nice to see, and I think it looks like a very interesting and great redevelopment, so I'm in support.
Yeah, I think this, again, continues to show the flexibility of the shaped places and things like alternative site plans that allow things like buffer yards to be adjusted a little bit for the unique conditions of the site, and I think Co-Cazard did a nice job of making sure that this fit into the area, so very admirable project.
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioners Irvin and Anderson. I think this will be a great addition to downtown.
And with that, all in favor of item number 10 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 10 passes.
Item 11 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 shaped place's zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff on this item. This is an item that you saw about a year ago. It's in regards to telecommunications towers in our UT utility form. It's really just a housekeeping measure. When we put it in an ordinance a year ago, we said that these telecommunications towers, these small micro cells, they're basically the light pole standard. In a residential district, they had to be on the corner of the property. Well, we changed that so that it's not just in a residential district, but it's when it's on a residential, single-family lot, because there are places like a church or a school that there may be another appropriate place to put them. So we're clarifying that when construction's in a DD or AD form, then it needs to be on that corner of the lot. So that was the clarification.
Any questions of the Commissioners? Mr. Schmidt?
I'm the applicant and the owner, and...
Thank you, Jeff.
They make great flagpoles job. Anyone from the audience want to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion. Oh, I do.
This is Carrie Johnson. I work as the manager of government and external relations for SDN Communications, and we support this ordinance.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else from the audience? Thank you, I need a motion in a second.
Move for approval of item number 11.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Think this makes a lot of sense.
All right. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 11 passes.
Item 12 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to adopt amendments to the 2035 shaped Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan.
Albert Schmidt, planning staff, here to present the update for the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. An exciting topic. You guys use the book. I'm going to go fairly quick because we considered a minor update, so hopefully you have questions or no questions. We'll see. Executive summary, just of the background of kind of what going through here. You guys obviously know we use Comprehensive Plan. We adopt them every 10 to 15 years approximately, and we update them typically every five to eight years after you adopt them, so our goals didn't change. It's a minor update. Our timeline for this has been, this, we did public open houses, we got minimal input, so really changes we proposed making of the updates. People were interested in, but they didn't really have any issues with. We've been to city council for informational. We're here tonight, October 5th, and then next week, we'll go to city council for formal approval of this one. It's a pretty fast-paced timeline here. Then you'll see, after that, we'll go for the joint areas outside of the city limits for approval. One of the major things that changed, we upgraded our, or updated our demographics. As you can see here, 2035, same year, both graphs, the first one's on the top is the old one, the bottom one's the new one. We changed and upgraded our population estimate from 272 in 2035 to 233. So we downgraded it based on the recession, things like that. We've also pushed it out to 2040 since we have gone a few years since 2009. So additionally, we made a few changes since our original draft, but now our future land use map changes. We have one future land use map going to one future land use map. So this was a big issue during city council informational, but you see our updated plans. The biggest change that you see here is that we eliminated the west-side corridor because that's not going to get constructed. So since 2009, we learned and updated based on what's actually going on there. In addition, we've also updated the future land use map to identify more internal dot areas, more internal uses to help along with the planning staff to go, hey, this redevelopment of this area does meet the Comprehensive Plan based on this and that. So we've done that with this. Some dots have changed, again, mainly based on the corridor changes and things like that, or existing land uses out there. Oops, sorry. Then the other one is our growth area. We updated these as well. So you can see, there's multiple maps in there. The main one, most people look at, is the growth management area. It's kind of the culmination of sewer streets, water, things like that, and so you can see how that's changed. We've updated that since we, 2009. Other than that, I'll take any questions you guys have.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Could you speak to the change in the projections on population?
I can try to start, and if I can't answer them, I will get Jeff up here to answer them. So the biggest change that you saw with, when we hit the recession, we didn't gain as many people as we anticipated at that time, so we reduced our growth rates accordingly, and that's ultimately what we got. You want to add to that?
And that is the summary, but you can see on the bottom, and it's spelled out specifically in the resolution, but the projections there, it says median projection, we were projecting from 2.15 to 2.7 percent, and now we're projecting down below at 1.64 percent, so it's about half a percentage lower. Well, when you go out 40 years, a half percent really changes the numbers.
Any questions, Albert? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need, Jeff, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion in a second to approve item number 12. Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 12 passes. Move to adjourn. Second.
Did you need to do new business? Did you need to ask if there's new business? Okay.
We normally don't do that.
Okay.
Do you want to vote? All in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.